I have four o'clock, what you guys got?
Pledge. A pledge to lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, we have minutes in front of us for the 7th and 21st. Okay, I'll share the 7th and not the 21st.
About 21st?
21st. I wasn't sure from that one, but I'll say 21st. I make a motion to approve the minutes of June 21st.
And I'll second the June 2nd minutes?
All fair and sound.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 21st.
Hi there. I'll second that, all fair and sound.
Oh, busy, busy.
You're a frazzled today, dealing with a lot of criminals and stuff.
If you count my seven-year-old, yeah.
You're really lucky.
We got a couple on the back there, might help you out.
Put my whole set of my car keys on the bumper of my truck over the weekend. My son did. Didn't bother telling any of us, so.
You set them there or?
Set them there. So I used my spare key to go to work this morning because they couldn't find my keys. Now we have no idea.
Walking the road somewhere.
And if somebody buys some keys, it'd be great. Can't even get into my office.
Isn't it amazing how that feeling you have, you put the keys or your wallet, you're just announced, bounced, phone through that, escorted, you're lost.
So yeah, I'm a little frazzled.
Yeah, you'll make it. You're young, you're tough.
If you're old like me, then we can forget where you put stuff, so see.
I do that still, too. This one I'm a little more concerned about. Could be from anywhere from here to the hills now.
Okay, we have payroll, about $191,657.19.
I make a motion to approve that, $191,657.
And it is a little higher due to the county pay raises.
All fair and sound.
And then we have a county's payable report, and we've got an amount of receipt of that, an amount of $55,079.
I'll make a motion to approve the amount of received the payroll claims, county's payable for $5,079.
$10.20.
All fair and sound. Driving check. Well, I got the tires a little bit. You get old tires, yeah, too.
So low today.
All right, we have county's payable, that's numbers high because of material purchases by the highway department.
I make a motion. Let me see, county's payable claims for $905,475.67. I'll second that.
All fair and sound. Did you feel the spirit of the room just lift a moment ago? Chris came in.
No, I didn't see.
See his smiling face back there, as I always like.
You're up, fella, what you got? So there's two grants that I would like to approval to apply for. The first one is what we do every year, it's the emergency management performance grant, it's for salary. It's no less than $18,000 from the state to reimburse the salaries for the emergency management agency. That's a pretty easy grant, there's no matching. The next one is the emergency management performance grant competitive, which is money that the state has got from the federal government to help emergency management. We're going to go after a generator for the highway department, a backup generator. We tried it before, but it wasn't the right grant. This is the right grant, it's not to say that the state's going to give it to us. So the cap for this is $40,000. And I put some requests out for estimates on generators, but I haven't gotten them back from the different companies. But what we'll do, and again, this is a non-matching grant. And so I think this will be pretty good. Pretty highly likely that the state's going to give it to us. The only problem that, you know, I see is that we're going to have a recurring cost. We're going to have another generator to put on the contract for maintenance. I don't know how much that is, I'm trying to look for that. But from my point of view, if we have a power outage, ice storm, or something like that, we want the highway department to have power so they can keep the roads clear and stuff.
Well, I make a motion, we approve the request to submit grant applications as presented by the emergency management director.
And I'll second that.
All fair and sound. Thanks, sir.
All right, next up, we just had a lead.
I have a letter on the ground field status out of L A B. It just summarizes the activities, got the history of what's going on. I tell you, as I said before, I am so appreciative of the state doing this. It's nothing that we wouldn't have even ventured into because who knows what we would have found. And as I told somebody the other day on this, we're talking, that your lady just walked in the room, somebody taught her absolutely the driving force behind getting this cleaned up. Walvash Power helped from the very beginning, I'm involved, been involved in this, been a great project. It's up, it's going to become something useful to the county again, so I appreciate that, all parties involved.
Jim, I'm just going to give you a quick update, so we did get a letter from the state. It's considered a status letter. Yeah, so with that, then we're going to move forward with the transaction with Mr. Larson and Nick's involved in that, to make sure that we do all the correct things for him, like we would normally. So hopefully, soon, we'll have that out of county, state, and then officially.
And it wouldn't happen without, you know, you making contacts that you made and having Walvash Power start the process with phase one, and then we throw all the phases, it's been a great process. So it'd be nice to have a light back out there again. Okay, we have CBF vendor information here. What it's asking is, should vendor information be available to public requests? Personally, I would think, no, I don't know why we should be expected to provide vendor lists to other potential people, is a public information there entitled to?
So the position that I'd recommend taking is that they need to file a FOIA request, and they need to indicate where and FOIA, it gives them the authority to request that information.
Freedom of Information Act is what he's requesting.
And then I'd make them go through that formality and make them show where and FOIA entitles them to that.
Do the vendors have any expectation of privacy when they sign up for something like that?
As far as the T M Ls?
Yeah, well, that's what this is for, when they sign up for the T M L, they have any expectation of any privacy? Or can we give their phone number out to anybody?
The phone number, I wouldn't feel comfortable giving out, Wells is on that application.
Yes, sir, name of the business, the vendor's address, their email, and their phone number.
So generally, I'd take a position, no, they're not entitled to it unless they can show me where they are entitled to it.
I feel the same way, if there's no federal ID number, anything like that on there, the chief.
I don't believe there's, they don't, they might have their tax ID on it, but very seldom do they do that.
So even if I was a place, one of these, or my own little festival, I don't think I write to contact some county and say, I want your list of all your vendors, your contact information, and we would all, so. I would resist until they show us we have to.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I could research it, but really, I would put the burden on them to show us that they're entitled to it.
That sounds good to me, that makes sense.
That they can file a FOIA request and if.
They'd certainly come and walk around to get all the information they want to hear. If they could do that, I don't think the other job should have to provide that.
No, yeah, like places try to just use the government for information and shortcut the process a little bit. But, you know, if they think FOIA applies to it, they can file that and, you know, we'll address it then.
You want that in a form of a motion that we require that of them to do that, or?
Yeah, I mean, generally, I think that's just good business for the county anyway. Anytime they're requesting large amounts of government information, they need to find and file FOIA. We shouldn't just hand over documents, because we need that paper trail to protect us.
That being the case, tell me if I get this wrong, but for the minutes, I make a motion then, that we do not openly provide vendor information to request unless they have sought such information under the Freedom of Information Act and has been granted by us then. That way you don't have to give anybody things that anybody else.
Or non-solution numbers, and I'll second that.
All fair and sound.
And that's just the more formal process, and that protects us as a county.
I can see, I really can't see it either, but they could, but it's not like it's hidden. They can come to the festival and get that thing right, they want to get it.
Right.
If there's some people who want to give it to, they'll give it to.
That's right. I don't think, they should be mad at us for giving some organization this stuff, okay. And then we just have the report then, we get business meetings from Walvash River Heritage Corps of Permission. We have a incident report here from Rock Hill. So the tree simply fell from the interior of the woods and happened to hit a camper of Daniel Whitaker, camping in Modern 21. There really wasn't any high winds in the area, the tree was rather healthy. Heavy rains from past week might have weakened the roots of the tree, causing it to topple. Mr. Whitaker sustained damage mostly to the top of his camper and no injuries were reported. Manager exchanged information and law enforcement was contacted in order to complete her report. Both the manager and Mr. Whitaker took photos of the incident. The manager also compused the state for Mr. Whitaker's troubles, obvious, your lady's safe and free then, for the troubles. Typically, residential-wise, those are acts of God and I'm not responsible about it in a camper situation. What would be your impression of that?
I would rather not comment about it. I'd rather let insurance do their thing.
So that's just a report, we don't have to take any action on that. Then we have a contract with Emergency Mobile Technologies.
Yes, and this contract is something that Julie wants. She's not here, she's going to be here today to the meeting, so she wants, the ambulance needs new chase put on it. And before she can get that done, she has to have a con, the company's requiring a contract. And we do have the money into the 2022 budget.
You got to copy this.
It's just this one page here?
Yep, that's all, just that one page.
So it's what we would have done in the past, but now they want a contract for that, so this is a contract. I don't know what we probably would have done in the past anyway, it's just a matter of putting bodies on the ambulance.
And then once after this process, Julie sends it over there to them, and then they will order the equipment.
That's why they want, they must have been burned sometime, or they got okay to do it, and they did it, and then the county didn't take it, or not ask, but the county didn't take it. You said money isn't placed in her account, she hasn't.
Yes, it will be placed in 2022. And they're not expecting to get this, like, right away, because they're kind of backward on their.
They just want a contract, a court order, stuff. You guys have any questions on that? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion, we approve the contract with emergency.
E M T, we.
Yeah, E M T, something like that, for $86,000, multiple sixty-two.
And then this one's for.
And I'll second that.
All fair and sound. Can we sign it back here? There it is.
All right, thank you. All right. John Deere, all of Park County Health Nurse will be managing the Park County COVID testing site as well as the Park County COVID techs and planning. She will be full administrative access to all related content in ZOTEC to manage those sites, as well as being added to the corresponding B A N lists. So will you see your motion to approve?
And then I need this copy here signed, Jim.
Okay, they grant her access to ZOTEC. Whatever ZOTEC is.
It must be computer system. Connects with the state department of health.
The highway department, they get the road made at the back of the management emergency.
I don't know, are we still doing the vaccine that the manual services, does that still work?
They got the road done, they can drive up right there, so it's going to work out well.
The testing site's still clear, community.
That one is, but we will have our own there as well, test there as well, yeah.
Because I haven't seen anybody in the community since I've been alive, so.
Yeah, they were open this summer. So is there a motion to approve this?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we sign the letter stating that I will be managing these two sites and asking for access to information with ZOTEC system.
I'll second that.
All fair and sound.
Have the EMS monthly report there from Julie. And we have the first month of report. Okay, any other new business?
And an old business was, we had the conversations here about the electronic funds transfer, the F D's and each thing, and we didn't want that going on. That was giving the companies access to our accounts, but it is not. And we talked with the auditors, and I didn't, with the auditors, they were going into the insurance conference pre-audit, and asked if it was just a matter of, because Missy was understanding that there was going to be access to the account to make automatic withdrawals, but it's not the case. It's just the case of allowing the auditor to write an electronic check, it'd be the same as writing a paper check, but instead of the electronic check, all everything would be exactly the same, claims would be the same, and the paper trail for the claims records would be the same. It's just instead of writing a paper check, they would write electronic check, and they had no problem with that. Nor did Missy, they contacted Missy, and Missy was fine with that, it was up. So that would be my recommendation, so I do it all, just, are you willing to do an electronic check instead of a paper check? Rush, you okay with that?
Did you have, I know last time you got two issues, and didn't have long enough information, but you thought. Like I said, my position is that we should not be doing anything E C H, it should only be done by paper checking, so. Again, Missy's a very good auditor, and that's, she has absolutely the right to say whatever she feels, and I have no problem, and I'm just, again, just talking from my own perspective, and.
Well, I'm consensual, because I certainly want, as I said, what county's do.
I'm a school, and I think everything should be written by a check, I just think that's safer and less risky, and also it provides the paper trail, I think, be able to, but that's just my.
Well, they said they had the pre, they had the insurance conversation, whatever you call that. They had no problem with it, because the record, the trail was still there, because you had that bank account, of course, you had to save it from the bank, I started all checks were written, so I don't have a problem with that. I'm kind of called the middle between the two, I don't make their job more difficult. But I'm not going to buck you on that, because you're the guy, I mean, that's what you get all those years, so.
Again, it's just like anything else, so things change, and technology changes, and philosophies change, society changes, and I'm just old school. I have not talked to Missy, if we, if you will let me take, if you will, my table and this, let me just talk to Missy. And I have talked to the new auditors over there, and I never even met the two, Bailey and Andrew or something like that.
Andrew.
Andrew, I don't even know who these people are.
And it's fine with me where I'm at.
They came on after I left, and I, so if.
I'm definitely.
We'll just stable this, let me talk to Missy.
I don't agree with electronic stuff myself, I don't like it, nothing to do with it, so. I'm resistant to it sometimes, and I have to deal with the state to.
Again, I understand, a lot of people are different, I mean, I've talked to, I've got a banker friend, and he he does everything electronic, he just punches.
I won't allow you to have automatic access to my account.
He pays all his debts electronically, he never writes a check, and we talk.
Well, if you haven't done that, let me tell you how it does work, if, for the accounting purposes, they have pictures of all, of everything, so any transfer, the electronic transfer you made, you pull up that page, it will show you who it was to and how much it was, and they just, yes and if, you got a check back from them, so.
We talked last time about the fact that one of these days, just a credit card over there, I mean, they're not going to take checks, it's just.
Well, no, you'll have an implant by then, it'll scan you.
Yeah, they'll just do whatever, so I mean.
I sound like my daddy.
Yeah, I understand, but the world is a little different today than it was when I was, but let me talk to them. I feel like.
I was making a motion, we tabled it.
And then we talked to Missy and Bailey and.
I guess you'll second this motion then?
Yeah.
All right, well, I'm very lucky on that, and that's what you did, so you're just there. You're on, but what I know about that, so. All right, we have the John Deere lease home I have seen in front of me here.
I didn't see it either.
But is it tax invoiced, I mean, they're wanting us to pay them?
So they're wanting you to pay, our contract allowed for it to pass through, we've been in, I've been working with Katie, and we've been talking with the D L G F and some people with the state. They passed a new law that took effect, that thing is either January 1st or July 1st, one of the two, that kind of changed how they do all of that, so there's been kind of a debate back and forth on whether or not we have to pay that.
I think they would decide that at some point.
Well, so.
It's not our equipment, we're just renting it, so why are we paying the tax?
Because we contracted to pay the taxes, because what the issue is. And in the future, I think we probably need to object to that in our contracts, but.
And I can understand, if I'm the guy, the only piece of equipment, and I think you should be paying it, because I'm not driving, you're driving, and I'm making it available to you, then I should just increase your lease to cover that cost. But it's the wording that we had, or the wording says, we're going to pay the taxes, well, I don't want that wording, I just want you to charge you $500 more, and I'll pay the taxes out of that hundred.
Because, I mean, we're supposed to be exempt if we're purchasing, but we're leasing, the leasing agent is actually the one that's responsible for the taxes, but we're using it here. But the new law had it a little different than what they'd done historically, so we ran it up the flagpole with the state, and they said, pay the tax, so.
So would be your recommendation then, that the auditor pay that invoice?
Based on the email I received back from the state, yes.
Make sure you put the minutes that our attorney, Nick Sauter, said.
Well, the part of the law, the part of the law that changed, I felt applied to this, but they're indicating that it's not, and it's on the duty of the people we're purchasing on from, to assert that in their tax file.
Yeah, I'd be fine, that, the change of wording in the contract, you said we're going to pay this much more, but we're not going to pay the taxes.
Right.
But it makes sense to me, because if I buy that PC equipment, I can deduct it on my taxes. Or I still pay personal property tax on it, even if somebody else is using it.
Interesting.
But, I don't know, it is worth a shot.
Yeah, I agree, all right. Okay, you guys have any old business? I have a couple things here. Randy's not going to be here today, and I don't think we have contracted yet for the bridge, you have a roof on Central Smith. I patched the roads on each side, interest on each side of Central Smith, and I patched holes on 40 there behind, the fertilizer plant midway out, but that bridge still did not have a new roof, it's been a couple years, it's time to get a roof on that. Courthouse doors, I looked at those, I walked, John Pratt there from council, looked at them. They agree that need be refinished, the finish is just awful on them. And if you remember last time, we had this done, how many years ago that was? Up to the point of this very final coat, we were pretty happy with, you take it back down to the wood. But that last coat was some kind of a semi-transparent stain, and it was kind of obscured, it wasn't really real green out. So John Pratt felt, and Roy felt, that the council would support go ahead and contracting to get those doors refinished and be done. So if that's okay with you, we'll move down that path, we won't have to agree to do it, so we see the numbers. But we do need to decide, so you need, go look at it if you have time. The outside now is kind of a brownish-beige color, it's not the dark brown like the interior doors are. And I can go either way, some people think we ought to go to the match the inside doors with that darker, they're all wall-in doors, so we should go with that darker stain, bring the grain out, make them all like all the rest of them are. Or we can leave them the beige kind of color, which kind of goes closer with the windows, windows on the outside. So you got two layers, you got the outside door, and then you have an interior door. Remember, there's a entranceway, you got doors on both sides of it. So we just need to decide, how much do we want being refinished at what color? And we probably have to make that for too long, before it gets too cold, maybe before Bridge Festival can, but it may matter if we even get it done before the before the tri, we need to do it quickly. So if you guys get a chance, go look at those, see what you think. Look particularly on the south door, the south door is worse. They'll have to do all, of course, if we do one, that won't be right. So they're all damaged, some, the south's a worse, some of them already just gone loose, that have to be repaired. So if you get a chance to look at that, please do. The other is, speaking of courthouse doors, at some point, the governor extended the emergency one more month. We just about pulled the trigger on this last month, of removing us from emergency status. That would affect us in two ways. One, if you remember, we went with the red and the green lights on the courthouse tower to signify our support for those first responders and people dealing with COVID crisis. If the COVID emergency isn't clear to be done, I would suggest we go back to the non-televised, the live-ified, like always, and then we go back to COVID crisis, I don't know what they want to do with that, or go back to normal. And the other issue is, it's come up a few times, I've never been eager to go back to opening every door in the courthouse without access. I think it's pretty good if we're going to have security, but just incorrect, if I'm wrong on this. I think the agreement with the council was ours to provide full-time security through July, is that correct? And after July, they're going to go back to three days a week, when the courts have your court?
I believe so.
Okay, is it three days a week that he has court, he needs to try there? So I'm pretty sure that the council opinion at this time is to stop the full-time security, but provide the security as we did before, which would mean an officer at the first floor at the booth that you had before there, rather than the door? I don't think we probably want people going in the basement door, walking through the basement without a security guy there, without some guy, it's certainly not Don's job to watch people come in, so we need to decide, at some point, we want to open open all four doors back like it was before the COVID thing, or what we want to do, but we're going to have to pull that. I'm getting both ways, I've got some people, and in the courthouse, I say it's both ways, if I talk to different people, some want to go back to what we had, with just four doors, doesn't make a difference. And others feel better to just have no one door to come in, and I'm okay either way, so we just need to make a decision on that. We would be, as Nick told me before, we would be the only courthouse that has every door open. You saw all around, who's had one access, right? Do they get full-time security on them though?
Vermillion has full-time security, Fountain doesn't, they only have one door access. But they, I think they have a guard that might be in the courtroom at all times, but they're not at the door. But they only have one door, you can only enter it from the east door. Then others have a, you know, you have to go through security and metal detector and all things like Vigo Kevin. all things like Vigo County. But most of them have one door access. Vermillion, Fountain, Vigo, Clay, um, I don't recall putting them whether it's one door or not, but, I mean, most of the surrounding are one door.
Okay. Before COVID, if somebody is in there during court.
During court days, day and hill court, yeah.
So he has court five days a week. I assume what he's doing is on the days it's criminal court.
Yeah.
Because Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, he has criminal court, and then Wednesday and Friday, he has civil court.
Yeah, but Monday, Tuesday, Thursday was the day we worked there.
Do you guys have a preference? Do you think it's any more secure, that way it is now than?
Security wise, the one entrance is a lot better.
Even without a guard down there on those two days a week?
Yeah, I don't know if it makes much sense to have it locked down to one door with not a guard there, but.
Yeah, but I'm pretty confident the council is not in a position or, or at least now, even if you gave you a full-time security. Unless there are grants available for that, I don't know if Chris can find grants available for that kind of thing or not.
I'm not aware of any, but.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So when will the security quit for the payroll?
Don't know. Have to talk to council. I, I, my impression was that it was funded through July. Is that what you thought it was, due July till July?
I thought through was what I thought.
Okay. And you're saying to me, that's what I think, but I'm not sure that's right.
I have it scheduled every day through July, but I mean, I could change if that's what they want to do.
All right. I, I think it's through July, but I also don't think it's going back to the, just on those court days.
Okay.
And that was Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Yes.
Okay. I prefer, if we're going to do it, what you said, to have a security guard there five days a week and come through that one door. I don't, the only people that benefit from it, ones that, ones that don't want to walk around the other side, but I don't, you know, that's not a catwalk. We did have to walk around the other side of the building to get in. The only, only ones that really impact me and they come so rarely, but when you get the sovereign citizens come, they all want to come in all four doors and try to create havoc the best they can, you know? They eliminate, eliminate that possibility. Unless one of them get upstairs, open the doors for the buddies that come in the other door, what do you do then, you know? So how do you stop that? So I don't know if there's a good answer to this, but we're going to have to make a decision before the end of July, so by next meeting, we probably all decide what we're going to do with it. See where we're at. Okay. Um, let's see if this all I have. Just so you know, we did have a, I got a call from a lady or a message, I guess, from a lady. There was a, a limb inside Boucher Bridge, and she and her husband, they went down there and moved the limb, and I asked if it came through the roof, and no, it came through the side. Apparently the log flopped down there, there, wherever, I thought you could get it and put a limb through the.
On the side, broke it off, yeah.
So Randy's going tomorrow to take care of that. Just, just so you know, it's a pretty, pretty weird thing. That can be pretty serious to die.
Water had to be pretty odd, yeah.
Knocked the lid right off. Okay, that's all I got. You guys got any old business? Well, Justin, what do you got?
Uh, just a few things, but they'll be brief. Sixty-four inmates today. Down a little bit.
What's our capacity?
Ninety-two.
Did you end up with any of the Vermillion County ones?
We're going to, we haven't yet, so we may take ten or twelve or something, so. Uh, averaging per month for DOC is eleven thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars, so just shy twelve thousand. Uh, total billing for the year so far, eighty-three thousand two sixteen, and we served over six thousand males so far this year. And we got the USD grant for a Tahoe. I think I mentioned that before a meeting ago. It is being built this month, so hopefully by August, we should have our hands on it, I hope. And then we're going to buy a second one, but it won't be built until fall or late fall. We'll buy it out of commissary, but that'll have us in pretty good shape again on vehicles. And the fair, we always have a trailer mobile command center out here every evening, so we'll have it manned again this year, and then, uh, we're doing overnight security each night again too, with an officer out there, so that's all I have.
Have you ever, I know they've had to change their leadership at the ECI. Have you ever, or have they ever come to you, us, security, providing security at Bridge Festival out in Town Square? We always hire somebody, and, and I don't think we've ever had any incidents, but they're just, like a person walking, walking into the place. I don't know what they would do if he had a, he had a problem. I don't know what rights that person has as a security, except by hiring who's security has. Does he have a right to detain somebody or stop somebody?
Cis for the rest, I guess.
Yeah. And what, and what extends of cis and rest? Can you knock somebody down? Can you tackle them? Can you injure them and hold them in place? What, what, I mean, what can you do? Is he in trouble?
Well, I don't.
Yeah, see, that's what I'm thinking. You need to look at having that.
Keep carrying a gun or anything, but yeah. I suppose.
I don't think they've ever carried a gun, just a flashlight, I think.
Like you said, I don't know if they've ever really had any issues or not, but.
They pay somebody to be there.
Yeah.
So I asked them, instead of talking to you guys, see if any of your deputies or your guys want to do that instead of.
The only issue is with everybody working all ten days of it.
Well, that's true, yeah.
Everybody's in their twelve-hour shifts, so.
Have you thought about that? That's right, you are. So.
Property owners hit us up before Mansfield and, yeah, I just, we couldn't do it, so Clay County did it for a while, so.
Okay. Right, I'm just thinking, but there was a better way to do that, but yeah, they're, they're all going, so.
Well, and hopefully they didn't call us or Rock. I mean, both could, you know, be there pretty quick if they had an issue, but.
All right, you got anything for us?
No.
Are you holding up?
So far, so good, so.
How old's the little guy?
Twenty-one months.
Did he?
Almost two.
Did he get exposed fireworks over the weekend?
Yeah.
Big bangs? Do you like that stuff?
The first night he didn't, but now he's used to it. So he likes the stars.
Okay.
The stars and the booms.
I like it. Okay. All right, well, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Randy, I'm not here. Anybody else? Cindy, you got anything? Oh, Cindy, I asked her to come. I don't know if you want to explain anything to them or what. See, Thrive, Ryan Keller from Thrive, West Central, uh, was looking at proposing that we enter into an agreement with Vermillion County to do a housing study. Purpose of the housing study, tell me if I guess I'm wrong here, was just to make an analysis of what are housing needs and what are our housing opportunities in the county worth. Cindy came up with a way of doing this. It was going to cost about ten thousand dollars for our share of the housing study, but no guarantees on the housing study. It would just be a document or some information available to potential home builders. And she referenced, Rush County has done it a different way, and so we have decided, and I talked with Ryan today, not to go after that Oprah grant. It was Oprah, wasn't it?
USDA.
Oh, USDA, USDA grant for that, because it was a re, we had to match ten grand, but whether we're going to be, see if we can come up with a better design. I felt bad for Ryan in that it was, they've only known about this for a short time and it's due by the end of this month, so they kind of threw it at him, and he's trying to throw it together, but that makes me and the council kind of, kind of uneasy if you don't really know what you're getting and what you're paying for and what's going to be the result. So we decided, and I talked to him this afternoon to just to put a pause on that, so Sarah and he and I and you, so that's an out of order, we'll figure out. I'd really go at it as, we designed what we want, now let's find a grant to do that, to get us what we want, instead of here's the grant, I'll see if we have to get some stuff out of that we could use, so. So if you hear a question about why we didn't do that, that's sort of, we just weren't sure what much time.
And a lot of that was because we're a rural county. I think what they were proposing, if we would have been a more industrial-based county, it made sense. That type of survey really doesn't make sense for our population. That's, that was the big question, I think, that came in to, that's probably not the best fit for Park County, um, but we think there's other ways that we could do a study, just not exactly what they proposed.
Okay, so we will.
At a much less cost.
We will proceed down that, down that path, but there is a need, I mean, there definitely is. I have several people my age and older, well, not too many older, but some older, male and female, but mostly female. As we know, the women kill the guys off, so they all die early and then the women live because they're a hundred, whatever it is. But I have lots of them, but I know of a seller, big farms in a moment, and moved to town, and there was a place to move to town to not have to take care of that farmer, but there's no good choices for them, so they're stuck in the big farms, their families have to get involved, or they got to pay to maintain all these things. So that's why it's important. We do have that need. We also have a need, if we're going to be a bedroom community for the industrial areas around us, we need to have places for people to rent. There are really very few rental places available for people to rent a house and, and later and, and go somewhere else, so we definitely have needs. We just don't know what our needs are. We don't really have a good document of what we have that we can even compare to what we need, so we can tell builders, this is what we need to be doing, so that's what, that's the purpose of this, we'll, we'll move along that path. Anything else you want to add?
Uh, no, I was hoping to catch Randy because I still don't have his road list or community process. The application opened this week.
Okay.
I know he was waiting on Warren. Warren had a death of family and hadn't been back since the last time you guys met.
Oh, and try to give the estimates on that. Yeah, I thought he was working on last time too, and Randy's just not here today, he's got an obligation out, so.
I'm sure he's working on it, I just, I was hoping to catch him.
He's all too busy. I would contact him if I were you, and I have to.
Oh, he knows.
Okay.
He knows we need to do that.
We don't want to wait. When's it close? When's he?
End of the month.
Oh, yeah, we got, we got to do it.
We know the roads.
We do, but he hasn't got the estimates on it, the problem is, yeah.
We had the, he's still stood big for.
Yeah, okay. Anything else?
Nope, nothing.
Motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll figure it out. We're good.